Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and zoning meeting. Today is June 3rd, 2021, and it is currently 7:05 in the evening, and thank you all for hanging in there. Can I just have you take a walk for the commissioners so I know who's with us?
Okay, John Michael O'Brien?
Hold on, hold on. Hello? I was not picking up for some reason.
Yeah, no.
Did you make national news?
What is going on?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Maureen, can I just have you read off the commissioners so I know who's in attendance?
Okay, John Michael O'Brien? Will be absent.
Yeah, he's excused.
George Miller? He has to be absent as well. He was also excused.
No, I'm not excused yet. He's on vacation.
Dana Joszy?
Here.
Timothy Ziegma? Brian Rogan?
Here.
Joan Beely?
Here.
Steve Wollman?
Here.
Peter Zerbozo? Do not see him joining. Andrew Lignani?
Here.
Thank you. And Steve Biella Jr.?
Here.
Okay, thank you. So I have, can I ask Andrew Lignani to be seated and move Mr. Miller this evening? And Steve Biella, can I have you seated for John Michael O'Brien, please?
No problem.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience, so let's continue on. Now that we've called a meeting in order, we're going to start with commission business. The first item is an extension of the approved site plan application of the Berlin Housing Authority for housing for elderly persons development, and 143 personal app. Do we have somebody to speak to the commission about this, or is there? Yep, Mr. Joszy, yes, welcome.
Hello, Joe Joszy, Andy Butter, not late, Chairman of the Berlin Housing Authority. I thank you for allowing me to address the commission this evening. As you know, we filed several years ago a site plan application for two building construction with 50 units of elderly housing at the former Nice Columbus property. So we are now at a point where we can go ahead with financing. We're applying in the middle of time for a community of a block grant application to facilitate demolition and site preparation for the construction of that project. But being said, the site plan has expired. We were intending on filing a new site plan application at some point in the future, but because of the deadline for the community of a block grant, we would like this site plan to be reapproved or extended, whatever the terminology is, to allow us to make application. And then I feel sometime in September, we'll probably be back in front of the commission for a new special permit. And I don't anticipate changes to the site plan will probably come back in front of the commission, you know, just to go through the site plan again to refresh it, so.
Excellent. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Those are a few. Yes, Maureen?
Can I just explain for the record so that we know we're doing the action that's needed? So this request is to extend the site plan as permitted by state statute. We were advised that that is acceptable because the extension period is still available regardless of the months that passed since five years, but it's allowed to be extended up to five, four years, and that's the process. But they will be need to come back with a special permit application and modifications to the site plan or site plan should that happen as well.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to ask Mr. Lignani or Mr. Biella, do you have any questions? I'll get it this way.
I do not. Madam Chair?
Okay, Stephen, Biella, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, terrific. Commissioners, you have a play around this or the extension motion? Oh, making a motion, okay, go ahead, Ms. Joszy.
I will, I will make a motion to approve the extension requested to February 12th, 2025. Second, I'm second by, sorry, Mr. Wollman. Thank you, Mr. Wollman, for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those opposed? I hear none of the motion moves, okay?
Very much, I'll see you in the call.
Thank you, will do. Next up is a facade application of Kern Realty LLC for signage and landscable improvements for an existing commercial property at 979 Farmington Avenue in the CCD 2 zone. Is there anyone here to address the commission regarding this application, the facade application?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Hello.
Come on up, name and address for them.
My name is Peter Kern. I live at 124 Blue Hills Drive, Berlin.
Okay, thank you.
So basically what we're doing is I bought the building in March from a landlord where I've been there. I've been at the location for about 12 years now. I had two years ago opened up a mortgage broker company. I bought the building and it's in need of some repair. So we're replacing the roof, all the gutters, and along with the project in progress, I learned that there's a facade program. So we're replacing the front landscaping, which has fallen into disrepair. Lots of weeds, we spray constantly, and it just keeps coming back. Trees are out of control, and replace the sign. So originally I had applied for more than the program had, or the roof and other stuff. Due to the limits on the budget, we, they approved me for the Department of Economy, Department of whatever, approved me for the facade for the sign and the landscape.
Terrific, hold on. All right, great. Commissioners, do we have any questions regarding the? Maureen, do you have anything for us?
Just that the signage will require building permits, and at that time will confirm that the proposal meets the sign and regulation with regard to how they're set.
Okay.
For expectation, you're to be compliant, but I don't believe they have the difference.
So you, okay, yeah, we're going to have landscaping, right? Okay, terrific, that's good.
I'll make a motion to approve the facade grant subject to staff review.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wollman, do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
Ah, Mr. Ziegma beat you to it. All right, terrific, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Biella, Mr. Lignani?
Aye.
Okay, terrific, anyone opposed? All right, you're not moving on. All right, onto the new business. We have a special event application of John Mengeco, Italian Political Independent Club or an Italian craft club craft fair with food trucks at 16 Harding Street in the general industry zone, which is the GI zone, on August 8th, 2021. This was something that was continued over from May 20th. And do we have anyone here to address the commission regarding this application?
I'm here, Tracy Cantino, to represent.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
John, 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 main speaker's also on.
All right, terrific, thank you. We have them both. You have a dynamic dual. I feel very important. Okay, so which one of you would you like to address the commission first about what you'd like? What your proposal is?
I'd be happy to if you'd like me to, John.
Yeah, go right ahead, Tracy.
Boy, they're so polite. Okay, great, go ahead.
So what we're proposing is to have a craft and vendor event on August 8th, which is a Sunday, from 11 to 3. I have not sent out vendor applications yet. I was waiting for this meeting to happen to make sure everything was approved beforehand, but there is two layouts that I have given to the town as a proposal of different amount of vendors that are available. If we do get up to 20, we're going to have a little less parking, but if we ended up having more, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were showing the map of both, but the front part of the Italian club will be where the main parking is. We were told by the landlord of the property behind the Italian club that we can use their property as long as the vendors carry their own insurance and take responsibility if anything happens during the event. So I am asking every vendor to have their own insurance and tax ID number, so that part will be on each vendor. Again, I have no idea how many vendors yet until I start giving the applications out. I was waiting for tonight's meeting to go forward with that. So I'm not sure what else you are asking for right now.
Okay, so I just saw a difference between, is that a 15 tent layout and a 20 tent layout? Is that what the difference is?
I believe, I believe it's that number, yeah. It all depends on how many more applicants we're going to get and how many we can fit inside and how many we can fit outside is how the parking is going to vary.
And it seems like the, it seems like it'll actually complement the the business event, which I believe is the brewery there?
Correct, I did talk to the owners of the brewery, and they are willing to open up on that day and make a special hours for the same time that the event's going on. And at that time, we're going to have a couple of things happen at the same location. So if we can get a couple of food trucks, they will also be in that same parking lot as the brewery as well as our vendors are going to be parking back there and additional parking for people that want to come to the event.
Okay, terrific. Commissioners, do we have any questions or?
Make a motion?
Oh, go into motion, okay, fine. If someone's got some questions?
I always have something to add.
I should know better.
I just want to add that the food trucks, as well as the vendors, need to check with the police department on the proper solicitor's permits and making sure that they're complying to the annual requirements.
All right.
So I alluded to it, but with the mention of food trucks, I want to make sure that that's clear, that they need.
All right, terrific, thank you. Mr. Wollman?
I'll make a motion to approve the special events on August 8th, subject to the staff comments that we've seen here, items 1 through 6, and the food trucks receiving the appropriate permits whenever they need to help the park.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wollman, do we have a second? I will second, all right, thank you, Ms. Joszy, for the discussion. Andrew and Steve, are you good with this? Any questions from you?
I like it. Not at all, I like it.
Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, guys, thank you. Those opposed? We'll see what we can do. All right, then all those, all those in favor, we said aye, okay, moving on. Site plan application for, have a good evening. Site plan application for Sabrina Burpo Brandal, Brandal, Kemkai Properties LLC for construction of a 10,000 square foot multi-tenant office warehouse building and related site. That's next item on the agenda, do we have any more here? Oh, wait, I think there's more, right, related site and improvements, you have 239 Christian Lane property, the Ochi Children's Trust and the General Industrial 2 zone. This was continued from May 3rd, and we do have to decide on it by June 17th, 2021.
All right, I'll just clarify that there is the extension period that's allowed both by statute and by.
Okay. Do we have anyone who is going to be representing this applicant for the commission?
I am here, Serena Griffo Brandal.
Okay, thank you, Serena. It's hard to see her name from this distance, I see your smiling face, but not connecting. All right, oh, welcome. And now we, now this is continued, and I believe we also have some plans here that were submitted, but if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, we are in the process of purchasing 239 Christian Lane, and the closing is pending on site plan approval. Previously, our plans were not as detailed, so we have submitted, our engineer has submitted much more detailed plans along with the drainage reports and narratives required by the engineering department. If I can look through the plans and, and discuss a little bit on the site plans, we're showing the traffic flow that was requested and commented on last time. The entrance has been placed at the north side of the property. Parking spaces are shown. We also have included more detail for the landscaping plan. In addition to all the engineering detail that was requested for the drainage and then on the actual building for the office warehouse, you can see we've added the windows and placement for exterior lightings. You can clearly see the doorways. So we're natural light, we're able to enter the building. The building will be a cinder block building, 10,000 square feet with four partition walls in the middle, this is an investment building for us. So we have the possibility of having four tenants or two tenants. So the partition walls will allow us to accommodate how much space our, our tenants would need for this zone. And if there are any questions or comments, I would be glad to address.
I have a question, if you don't mind. I'm looking at the front elevation of the building, and I do thank you so much for putting some windows in there. I think it's just going to really help you out with the building itself and with having clients in there, and natural light is always a bonus. My question is, is that it seems to be, are those considered security cameras above? I guess there's two doors, yeah. It's like, we have them over one door and not another door, and so are those just lighting that's supposed to flood out the doorways or the walkway or?
They would, I believe the ones on the corners of the building would be sufficient enough to light that doorway. But again, once we get into the building permits and we have the mechanical and electrical plans, you know, if more is required, we will certainly, you know, add more, but it's assumed that the ones on the corners would provide enough floodlighting for the sidewalk that would be in front of the building for the entrance areas.
But if they're all going to be four separate doorways going into the four separate units, don't you think it might be to your advantage as you're building them or making this proposal that you have some sort of architectural lamp lighting down on each individual door?
Sure, like the decorative, I'm sure, yes, we would, we would absolutely include that.
Yeah, because that's something that I think you'd want to put up front, and it might actually help you as a sales point, because I know the one, if I was going to, if I was ever in need of a industrial building, the first thing I'd be looking at is thinking, if I've got to come here at 5 o'clock on a winter night and it's dark outside, what's going to light my way? My cell phone or my security light above my head? And I would choose the security light above my head every time. My cell phone's always a little on, maybe what can you say? So I would really encourage you to see if you could get that worked into the design. And I do see that you went on to do some work with the landscaping as well. I just saw the sides of the building. Are you planning to landscape any side or pretty kind of arborite or something to break up to brick?
Yes, particularly, particularly on the, on the north side, that there's still a house. The house there, we would, we would definitely do a row of abreviations just to give them more privacy and to, you know, kind of separate, separate the still residential portion of that, of that property, so it, you know, they don't see the traffic and, you know, the, the big building versus the house that was there before, the empty lot that's there now.
Yeah, all right. And you're proposing like an island in the front of the building facing Christian Lane?
I, I believe that dictates the, the traffic flow there. But yes, where, where the mouse is pointing now, yes.
You see where the mouse is?
I don't think it, I think it's more like a very large peninsula, I don't think it's really a, an island. I believe it connects to the southern section of the property. I believe that dictates the traffic flow, my understanding from the engineer.
That's, that's elevation.
Something with the drainage.
This is Maureen speaking, that's the drainage, that's the elevation drainage of dipping towards the drain catch basin.
So is that all paved then?
Yeah. She can confirm it's paved because there's gravel noted on the side, but I believe that's pavement. The, the tumulus is right, says right off to the side of it.
Okay, and so where would the landscaping go? Because now, now I got confused with, with that oval one there, I just got confused. So landscaping in the front of the building would be maybe out, I'm showing where them. I'll, I'll just follow your mouse.
I'm, I'm not seeing any other plant in the front of the building.
That would actually walk into through that.
Yeah, I could see the, I could describe it.
Can you please describe where the landscaping on the front of the building will be facing Christian Lane?
May I comment? Am I being addressed?
Yes, please.
Yes, it would, if, if you move the mouse down just a bit, that, I, I don't know the, the footage, if, if landscaping would be allowed there, the, the front footage that's needed to just be grassed, or if we could add some deciduous trees there similar to what Forest Machine and, you know, Prospect Product has done pretty much across the street. So if it would be allowed for that small piece of grass area to have some deciduous trees there, we would be happy to add those.
Okay, or you would work with staff on a reasonable compromise?
Exactly, because obviously all the, all the town plow, you know, the snow is going to be plowed up there, so, you know, there's not much room, so whatever the most practical and as well as, you know, I, as well as, I'm so sorry. Visually, visually appealing solution would be, you know, I, I don't see a row of azaleas there because I know the plows would just, you know, pretty much demolish those in the winter. But, you know, if you deciduous trees similar to, to Forest Machine across the street would probably be a, a very nice addition there.
Okay, terrific. Any of the commissioners have a comment at this point before I go to Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, Tim's going to go first, or Commissioner Ziegma?
Let me get this on, okay. I have a couple of things, and I know this application is not completed here. Utilities, they go beyond the roof, and we usually want them blocked from sight. The kit says they do have the fire rating for the walls, but there is no fire suppression or detection in the building. And the fire marshal is asking for a full set of plans for that. As I see this right now, it's not completed yet for for review, our marshal, some discrepancies with the town engineer. You know, things as I read here that are not on the plan yet. All for, for the industrial building there, but we surely need a set of plans that will be to all our regulations.
May I?
Yes, Maureen.
The fire marshal comment, I'm sorry, I, we just cut and wasted straight from the way he worded that, the, the architectural plan review that he generally does is with the permitting for those systems within the building. So that was, I believe, his intent. That's the comment he usually makes, the conversation we usually have, but he put it on his comments that needs to be done, much like the, the building official is now pretty regularly commenting about the quality of the plants he needs for the permitting process when he sees the plans to review, as opposed to comments that are needed for the site. Those are structural, you know, they go with the, the design jobs and the art construction jobs, but that. The town engineer made the comments just prior to having left on vacation, and they seem to be typographical in nature. Most of his comments referred to a flip flop of the engineering, the, what was the, the gravel versus the tumulus. In one sentence said, the number went with the tumulus in this sentence, and the number went with the gravel in this sentence, and vice versa, so they were typographical errors as opposed to design errors. And that was the impression I got from him as well when he spoke about the comments he was making. This drain pipe that says it's 7.5, rotation appears to be a foot. So a seven and a half foot pipe that seems, again, to be a typographical error on behalf of the engineer as opposed to a 7.5 inch type would make much more sense. So I don't think the, you know, we, I got the impression from our town engineer that these work. I don't think the, you know, we, I got the impression from our town engineer that these work things that he would not be able to easily rectify with their. Engineer in the permit. At the permit stage. As far as other comments, you know, again, the hookups, the the utilities are in the road. And are actually into the site, so then it's a matter of perhaps the design of the floorplan inside as to. How they extend under the pad.
I had some questions.
I'm not sure, I haven't had a lot of time to actually review the plans that were submitted. And I'm not sure that I really understand whether the trees that are shown on the plan. I'm looking at page one. There are a number of trees identified. Are they existing trees that have been marked or are those? Part of what you're saying is landscape plan?
I believe those would be added.
So those would be added, but. The landscaping seems to be rather incomplete. You've discussed or offered a comment that you would put an arboretum hedge in. And plantings near the roadway. What strikes me as I'm just looking at the footprint of this plan is that. There seems to be a lot of depth behind the building, which I assume is to allow trucks room to move.
Correct.
I'm. I'm not sure if there's room to shift at all to maybe improve the overall curb appeal of the building. To go back and add to your landscape plan in some way. But it's. Honestly, it seems very incomplete. It's hard for me to. Have an opinion because of its incompleteness.
May may I just ask, just the completeness of the landscaping? Shown in the plan?
The landscaping, your lighting plan. It's, there are a lot of unresolved staff comments.
Do we know if there's a dumpster on site?
I'm sorry, currently or will would there be in the future?
Will there be a dumpster, will there be a dumpster on site or?
Yeah.
Okay, where is that gonna be located?
In in that back where the area, the extra asphalted areas for the truck turnaround, it would be in that back corner.
Okay, and is it gonna be screened or is it the, do we show it on them? Do you show it?
It is not shown, I'm sorry, because that's gonna depend on the tenant's needs. We we're not sure if we would need just one dumpster, if we might need several dumpsters. So that would depend on the tenant's needs.
Okay.
But we need to, oh, don't we need to have a physical area where it's gonna be?
Yeah. Very good point. Mr. Commissioner Wolman says that or or just reconfirms that we would have to know where that. Where that area for the dumpsters would be, whether it was one or four and how it would be addressed or or shielded.
Noted.
Okay. Well, I think maybe we might have some work on this. It's it's the flavor of commission. I I'm sorry. Andrew McNally or Steve Byall, do you have any questions for the applicant at this point?
All my questions have been asked and answered, Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? It's almost as if, it's almost as if you're headed in the right direction, but you're not quite there yet.
That's helpful, thank you.
But I'll turn. Labor Commission. Do you have another question?
Personally, I hate approving a plan that's not complete. I've seen so many times over the years, the plan that's not complete ends up being the one that's done. And, you know, the inspectors go out there and they look at this plan. You know, and according to them, it's it's completed, but. It's not to our relation, so. I don't want our next meeting is two weeks from now.
Two weeks, it'll be.
Fifteenth or something. Okay, it's the third.
Let me see, fifteenth, sixteenth. Seventeenth? Yeah, it would be the seventeenth.
Then we would need an extension, right?
Well, after that.
The sixteenth is then, we need to.
The nineteenth is the deadline, so we.
The nineteenth.
Yeah. Our our meeting would be before that.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit more work to do. Alright, is that a, is that a motion?
Yes, I'm making motion to continue to the next meeting. The applicant can complete the application perhaps and. Address any concerns staff has.
Okay, terrific. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second, alright. Thank you, Mr. See further discussion, Matt. All who's in favor.
Aye.
And Mr. Byala?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 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 alright. Awesome, fair, right, okay, terrific. Alright, so we'll see you in two weeks. Everything wrapped up nicely, okay? I think that was presaid, but anyway, alright, so we're moving on to the site plan application of eight sixty one Farmington Avenue LLC and the Kokomo Brothers Associates LLC. For our unified plan for access parking and site improvements associated with repairs and additions to existing buildings at. Eight sixty one and eight seventy three Farmington Avenue and the CCD two zone and Kensington Village overlay core one zone. And do we have anyone here to, yes, I see some folks who are stepping up to the podium. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Brandon Manfield, civil engineer in the state of Connecticut with the Antique River Consultants. I'm here representing both applicants, eight sixty one Farmington LLC and Kokomo Brothers Associates LLC. Tony Galenti with eight sixty one Farmington Avenue here tonight, and I believe Tom Kokomo is on Zoom. And other roles here to answer any questions that I can't. So I'll give a brief presentation on the plans that we submitted and what the improvements are. I'll also go through existing conditions briefly. And then really open up to any questions that you may have. I know we do have some architectural plans as well. That we can run down so you can get a feel for the addition that is being proposed at eight seventy three Farmington Avenue. So I do have some presentation boards that I prepared. You have the color ones. Okay. Want that shared? I just started here real briefly. This is the title sheet just with color and overlaying on the twenty nineteen aerial. Site location, north is up on the page. The site is on the north side of Farmington Avenue, just to the south of Berlin Station. And also to the south of the recently approved Transit Oriented Development and Steel Boulevard that's currently under construction. Farmington Avenue would be down on this page and about three hundred feet to the left or to the west would be Depot Street. So that gives an idea where we are. You already covered what zone we're in, but we're in the commercial core design district CCD two in Kensington Overlay Zone. VCA one, so you do have that on that sheet as well. You go to the next sheet, which what I did is I took basically the. Survey that we have and just overlaid on the twenty nine scenario so you can see the way it looks a couple of years ago. Not a whole lot has changed on the site. There currently is some work going on on eight sixty one, so there's been some improvement there, but. You see outlined in orange are the two parcels of question on the left is eight sixty one Farmington Avenue. That is about point two or point one nine acres. You see the building in the front left corner, closer to Farmington Avenue and basically everything around it would be paved. This aerial does show a garage to the top left or northwest corner. That garage's been demolished since the time of this flight, so the survey that overlays it doesn't show the garage, but the aerial does. On the right side of this page, you'll see the existing eight seventy three Farmington parcel. Again, building, the existing buildings highlighted orange in the left center of that property. Outlined in orange is the. Property boundary. This one's of, I think, point three seven acres, yes, point three seven acres. And again, most of the site is impermeable surfaces around it quarter of access to parking. What you'll see for both of these sites combined, there are three points of access to Farmington Avenue. One in the southeast that serves eight seventy three, one in the center that serves eight seventy three, and then one immediately adjacent that serves eight sixty one. So a whole lot of pavement up to on the state road. Beyond that, there's also parking immediately in front of the eight sixty one. Building, so that parking goes out into the state right away, right up to the sidewalk, so. Everything in front of eight sixty one is paved and a good chunk of the front of eight seventy three is paved except for the center landscape. That's about it for existing conditions, so moving on to what we're proposing. So it's basically the same. Plan, same aerial is overlaid with the proposed conditions that you see on your sheets on the three. And so the main changes here, and I'll go through uses, so the existing use on eight sixty one. It was multi-family upstairs and and office or service on the first floor. That will be continued on this plan, so it'll be a personal service use on the first floor and one multi-family apartment on the second. On the eight seventy three project, the existing building will remain, will be offices, restaurant or. Retail service on the first floor, second floor, I believe there's two multi-family units which will remain. The addition on the far right, which is in a bolder black and and a darker orange. On the first floor in the rear will be an ADA multi-family unit that faces north. And the front will be a restaurant use that connects to the existing building. Upstairs, I believe there are five more. Multi-family, so. Yeah, there are four on the second floor and one on the third floor. So a total of eight multi-family units will be in the eight seventy three. Building and nine total on the whole project. Access improvements, we are eliminating two of the three curb cuts and most of the pavement. Is used for parking between the buildings and the road, so. What you see in, I guess, between eight sixty one and eight seventy three is a twenty four foot wide new paved access road. And then all of the other pavement in the front carriage will be ripped up. Topsoil and landscaped. Either grass or foundation planting, so a pretty big improvement in terms of the front appearance of these buildings. That singular access drive will serve new parking between the buildings as well as behind eight sixty one and behind eight seventy three. It'll be shared parking, there are shared easements for the parking between the buildings. In total, we have thirty two parking spaces for both of these buildings. And those, that number of spaces corresponds with the settlement agreement for these two properties that was agreed, I believe, in the twenty twenty. Let's see. Pedestrian access, we are providing new sidewalks. So between the handicap spaces in the front of eight sixty one will be a crosswalk serving new sidewalk. Into that building, that sidewalk has already been constructed. As part of the improvements there, including the accessible ramp. And those improvements. Moving on to the eight seventy three site to the right, there will be a sidewalk running south north that will connect to. Farmington Avenue, the sidewalk on Farmington Avenue and serve both the rear and front entrances to the building. So the front entrance will be basically what's there today separated by mulch beds. There'll also be, it'll extend to the new addition where the front door of the restaurant will face to the west. And then at the rear of the site, we kept the sidewalk turned up against the building as there are a number of service related doors immediately off the pavement. Trash and recycling, what we are proposing are small hatched or paved areas that serve. Herb site pickup in terms of blue and green or or blue and black roll off bins. That are typical for residential or small commercial uses, so for eight sixty one, it's it's located in the hammerhead to the north of the building. And that, those bins, which I believe there's gonna be two trash and two recycling will serve all the uses. And we're proposing a similar situation for the eight seventy three building, but have a suitable number of roll off containers or herb site pickup containers for the uses they have. And yeah, and. The occupants that they get for that building. If there is a need for a dumpster, there is a method we we can. We can change, alter the site plan where that dumpster pad can be constructed. To the north or above the hatched area for eight seventy three, there is an eight foot wide. And see a garden where we could construct a dumpster pad that's enclosed by a six foot high screen fence. They could roll those dumpsters out into the pavement when the dumpster or when the truck comes to pick them up, so. There is an area, but right now we feel we're gonna leave it this way for, and they can coordinate their frequency of their pickups for trash and recycling. See, in terms of the site plan, that is it. On this plan, you will see there there are landscaping. In general, what the landscaping plan here is, we're removing pavement and adding a significant amount of turf and mulch beds. We didn't get into the weeds, no content, sorry, what the plants were. But we, all of the fronts will be grass and then up against the building, we're showing cedar mulch beds or natural stones, so. Mulch beds that are low maintenance and. Slow growth, so.
Brandon, I get a quick question?
Go ahead, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get a set of plants, so right there where Adam just put the thing on the the gray area, is that patio?
It is, thank you for pointing that out. We do show a patio that's attached to the restaurant use. And that that patio will be surrounded with a four foot high steel black.
That could have been awesome, guys, thank you.
Yep.
No landscaping around that too?
Right now, we don't show what the landscaping will be. I think as that comes out, in terms of what size the patio lands are being. We can add that landscaping in. I think it would be in their best interest to show that. Or add landscaping along that for people dining mode. And while you're zoomed in, it reminded me too, I I do show signs for both properties, so monument type style signs. I saw the location, I don't have the details on the plans, but. Those details will be our candidates submitted to the town. Once they do, you know, they're usually a sign company handles that permit.
Grass lawn will make the place look a hundred percent better.
Yeah. Yep.
But I wouldn't mind a couple of trees. You're gonna stick any trees in there in front?
So there's one tree in front of eight seventy three now, one, one.
That's that's existing, one tree? Birds need more than one tree?
They do. We're not proposing a lot of trees, as you can see. There's not a ton of room with all of the utilities we have out front. In the condition it's been forever because it's been mostly pavement, but. I'm I'm open to the idea, I can I can look at some and.
We'll take suggestions.
Yeah. It's a pretty harsh environment facing south along the state road, but you should certainly give it a shot.
That cuz anything close to the street, you got a plant that's gonna get crushed by the state. Yeah, plows, trust me, I know. I'm just looking at the spans of the green there and mulch beds are a good idea, but on the other hand, I would like to see a little bit of shade there too, help with the lawn.
So.
If we can, and I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be a sixty foot tree, I mean, you can get like a four foot or some sort of flower tree. A shorthtree.
We can do more of a flowering and a street tree. They don't love salt environments, but.
Yeah.
You know, those little leaf lundings which are are very nice.
Oh, a barnsley tree.
It's just.
Bartlett pears. So people can do a health walk.
Yeah, that's all.
The hairs are nice, Kelly hair is nice.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, one.
Yeah.
Until we, until we start with the damn.
Actually, it's it's a big improvement, so.
Big improvement.
Well, I think Tony just said that they will put like. They plant one tree in the center of the building. Um, eight sixty one front it so that it kind of balances out the existing tree that exists.
A lot of the tree.
Three, we don't, again, with the state right of way being so high, we don't have a ton of room to be in that building, but we will plant a tree there.
Okay, so at least I get one tree.
Yeah, there's one.
Any flowers, trees, whatever.
Yeah, they're bright in my day.
Be totally.
You can look at the, the state's landscaping is just off the face to the left, you can see their 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 big hillside of wood chips.
We won't tell the state. Always.
We won't tell the state.
Yeah, exactly. No, I mean, it is a big improvement. It's got a much better flow than what it did before, that's for sure. I think so.
I think so.
And then you may have already said this, the patio is going to be connected with the restaurant for outside dining.
Yeah, so the front door of the restaurant is right, yeah, where the dresser is.
Yeah.
So that'll be the front door. So that's that'll be the connection.
Yeah, great.
Can I ask a question? On the other side of the appears to be the walkway, you have the patio, the walkway, and then you have like little islands of it looks like patio area?
Those are mulch cedar mulch beds for foundation plant things and annuals and perennial. So all of that will be landscaping between the building and the sidewalk.
So break it up a little bit.
Yeah.
And there there already are islands there.
Yeah.
They're kind of tucked up against the overhang of the building. So we wanted to continue that same. They are they're proud of that a little bit.
Okay. Ms. Yours, any other questions or go to that?
I just have.
Oh, okay.
I'll find Ms. Yours. Um, just one comment that uh considering the year that we've been through with um your outdoor dining area, the bigger the better. I think, um, and um in lieu of um trees uh for that patio area, um. I I don't know how possible something um like a pergola or wanting space or um like umbrella table kind of. Uh, the umbrella tables worry me from a wind perspective, but um, you know, to offer shade for people that would be using the patio space. And that might be another way to further beautify um the building without necessarily a lot of wind. And a lesser term. It's a very good job. That's what we're all about.
No one done it.
Hori, do you have?
I'm not sure.
Hori, do you have? I do have a couple of things. Um, I wanted to, rather than Brandon and I discussed earlier. Um, the handicap party, which was a comment from our both the um. Building department and our police officer, our traffic officer um with regard to their location. And some of you um may recall, a most of you were at a um. Subject part of the settlement agreement discussions, but there was some discussion regarding to um placement of parking spaces, et cetera. And I um will refer to Brandon to explain the labeling or assigning these people.
Sure.
Um, and at the same time, I started to remind everyone that um the the used areas, square footage, et cetera, was. Um, all part of the settlement agreement um that you all may recall from last year. The plan is substantially the same, again, drawn by Brandon for both. Um, both kinds. Um, so I don't want to have any substantive changes, but I don't think there really are any um parking spaces. Basic dimensions are all um but the uh. Yeah.
Okay, um, the handicap spaces we show, we have we have two common spaces and a shared parking up front. So those are as close as we can get to the front doors. And and will serve patrons or uh even residents of both. Out behind or in a clockwise fashion, once you go behind the addition of eight seventy three, you'll see two parking spaces up against the building there. Uh, and and there's a little covered porch that goes with that building. Um, so it's actually like dash line uh under the orange, but. So those parking spaces go up to it. I included a space that's big enough for ADA accessibility. So it has a five-foot stripe aisle as it's a ten-foot width. And the grades also comply with ADA accessibility. What I didn't do was actually put the painted um icon or sign. And and the reason I didn't do that was uh the occupant of that multi-family used on the first floor might not have a sticker. Uh, might not be handicapped. And what we ended up with is a parking space that's not used. Because it's kind of tough on the building. So we we're we're limited on the spaces we have. I didn't want to create a space which is exceeds ADA requirements or the state can't which requires us. Um, by putting a third space, we only need two for the fifth spaces, we only have thirty two. So a third space would result in basically twenty-nine pound spaces on already rolled inside. So in that case, I would recommend it's not striped, it's not signed, but it is uh signed for the resident. So that whoever occupies that gets that space. And that way, if they are handicapped accessible and have a sticker, that's still their space and it complies.
That that one that one unit is handicapped accessible.
It will be an ADA.
Oh, so so that's what. We said that should be an ADA accessible. Probably might not be occupied by.
Yeah.
You have an occupant signed there that's served for that.
Yeah, I I just think it's a better idea than, um, we just hate to see empty spaces on a lot that need spaces, so.
Yeah.
That that's, I think it'll work better. Um. And and it'll still allow us, if there is someone there that does have a sticker, it can be striped, it can be signed. Uh, so I think I think it's the best of both worlds.
And I wanted to remind that that's, I believe, does follow the conversation during. Intention for the dwelling unit occupants to have convenient parking. And particularly that ADA compliant space, have a space that is available to them. Convenient to that unit was often, but we have to use one of the shared spots down the road. Or her.
Okay.
Well.
And I also say that Chris Edge was with us, so I didn't know if he was trying to make a comment or just making a lot of noise back there or strange.
It's to be on you.
Um.
Was that with me now because I called, called to task.
Let's just.
Yes.
I also would like to call to the commission's attention that the um. Town engineer um did ask for clarification on the back out of those two space or like the space next to that tenant space. Um, on the back, um, Brandon has explained that the depth is the twenty-four foot width of the aisle is available there. And with the pad for the um. For the trash cans there would be um should be sufficient space. We understand it, but it's just a notation. You know, our town engineer was noting the tightness, but for everyone, but um. And Brandon can correct me if I'm wrong, but that they're really based on the settlement plan and maximizing the core spaces. Um, it's compliant, it's not ideal. Uh. But it and it is consistent with the cell.
Okay. Is there anything else, commission? Right, um, yeah, please.
Um, actually, did you want to look at the architectures or you're good because you got those late?
We don't.
I got one of those by the building department. You want to push me?
Yeah, well, the exterior.
Oh.
Which is to match the the building.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I I really didn't want everybody to be mad later, but I would perhaps talk about.
Oh, no, no.
That's usually, so, okay, he just watched.
Yeah, no, it's uh, I I did, and I I prepared a few times on, but uh we did give a rundown of what the building is. So on the left would be the existing building. Uh, on the right would be the addition, which is kind of turned ninety proud for pushing to the road. Um, the shaded areas that you see on the lower floors of the building, so the entire first floor. Brick. The lower half of the new addition will also be a brick. Um, the areas on that that are are white will be kind of the same green color, um, cedar impressions, final siding. Uh, with the white um corner trim and window trim. And. That basically covers the the materials that'll be used. So it it's basically there to kind of blend in with the building that already exists and and the surrounding of that. Like buildings.
Is the is that eight sixty one or is that?
That's eight seventy three.
That's the eight seventy three.
That's the new addition.
Yeah, so the left side is the existing building, the right is the addition.
And you said vinyl.
I agree.
Uh, it's a new problem. We're we're unleading into the hardy board type of us. Again, and then our design.
Oh, yeah, the town, yeah, village design.
Uh, I just wonder if you had any problem going hardy.
Can't say.
The vinyl, the dolls and veins and is all that looking, but later on is.
Yeah, it does definitely breaks down. Um, so I think part of it is batching the existing building, which was, I think, vinyl siding. Tie that in. Um, I can't make, I'm on Tom's behalf, I again, if Tom, you're there, feel free to chime in on this one.
He just agrees now.
No, you're slated vinyl?
No, he's not on.
Oh, he's not, okay.
He told us he was going only a couple of hours ago, he had talked to our office and said he intended to be on, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think that there's a. With the with the overlay that.
Well.
Does it have to be?
I don't know, because I was concerned with whether he was matching um.
Because then if he does that, so then he's got to strip the whole of the building.
Yeah.
Because then it's then it's, I mean, I I get Tim's point.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you're forcing him to then strip that whole other building to match that because you don't want the vinyl connected to the hardy pipe because then it will look worse.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's fair to make him strip the other early.
The second story.
Is there any reasonable compromise?
No.
Because it's going to be hard to match.
Good news is the the vinyl product he picked is a higher quality. So it's your impressions is a pretty nice.
The vinyl keeps getting better.
Yeah, I know it does. Is it like an all-side or?
It does, it's. It's a little bit thicker and it has a a grain to it, so it's not real fashioned, kind of holds it. It's a it's a better product.
Okay.
Uh, from my experience from that architect or builder, but I know we aren't certain.
Yeah.
It just looks a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have rooms.
Not like the old.
Yeah.
It looks like they they would have to strip the second floor of the building right now because if you put in the cedar impression. Uh, then they'll probably have to match the rest of the building anyway.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Uh, you know.
You might want to.
I just, I just, it does. Reiterate to him that uh, you know, we'd like it to be with our our scope of downtown, basically, uh, with the hardy board. So we can dashboard.
Yeah.
Passport. Uh, because he's still have to, you know, consider persons go have to do that.
Stop it now.
Yeah.
You should be getting on that. I just got a text from, you should be. Joining us.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, the other thing is.
But there's a lot of different products.
It's not easy, you know.
A lot of price will look good, but I think, you know, if he's going to put a new product on the new addition. It's going to have to match with the old.
Yeah, and that's going to be tough. So you may want to do one inch of route. A really good product.
I mean, the the product is a nice product now and uh. More up class, we get the product uh better from to to the uh owner of the building too.
All right, so that's what you're looking at. You're looking at that one.
Right, and if you look at that, that that.
That's it. It's got the shake look to it.
That's got the shake looks. That's vinyl. That's it looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, as I said, I I have a hard time pressing the owner to have to strip the old building when he's adding to our town. Especially when that looks as nice as it does.
Well, as long as.
No, you want to make make it blend and he's got it with more.
Because you don't want it to look.
How many it looked.
It's got to blend, it's got to blend in, you know.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying, I'm I'm not comfortable telling someone I got to strip a whole building.
Yeah, but I'm going to get that picture.
Just because.
I do, I do, I do understand that that's shake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have that on top of my house.
Yeah, it looks nice. Yeah.
All right. All right, what what else do we have to do with that?
Um, for the record, I'm just going to say that he expressed to us earlier today that the windows would be matching as well with the six over six. Um, same as that.
The truth of the screen is just on. All right, so that's done now.
It's gone now?
That's just a great improvement.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Yeah.
That anyway.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan application of eight sixty one. Farmington Avenue, L C and Kokomo Brothers Associate for Unified Plan for Access and to work with staff to make sure the buildings match.
Yes, okay. And the other comments?
And the other staff comments.
And the other stuff. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Wolman. Can we have a second?
Mr. Rogan on second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogan, and for the discussion. You all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He's right on there every time now.
Yeah, exactly. He's really good, right? All right, or is that Mr. Biella?
No, I don't think that stays.
No, all right, okay, that's a mystery. Okay, then all is opposed. All right, Steve Biella?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you. No, got to get you in there.
Got mixed in with Adam talking too loud.
All right, terrific. Thank you. All right, so that's that. All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. All right, so moving on, the next is uh, do we want to do the discussion of the P O C D twenty twenty-three? That's like, oh, I have to know why. So the lady's going to come so fast. It's coming at us fast and furious.
Um, really, what all we have right now is an update where it's setting up um interviews for the consultants on both week and next week. Um, we have a small panel ready to go with that. Um, and. Um, hopefully that works out. Um, and then we pulled together a whole load of materials that are available. Do a shared link on the website with those consultants and that ultimately whichever consultant we choose that has um. Maps and all kinds of other data that we pulled together so far. Um, remind everybody that we could give you a little survey, so if ever anybody can send those in, that would be.
And what if they just put, what if they just placed that survey?
Then you can ask for another one and we will, I we will, we will send out another survey via email to everyone. Um, that will.
All the papers I lost, it would be one.
Yes, survey, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Wajorski, I think from the Housing Authority, was, yes.
May I address uh the P O C D?
Um, yeah, I think so, well.
It's Commission of this.
It's Commissioner Riz's, but it's just a comment.
I'll send the letter.
Oh, oh, okay. All right.
Give me something to make that job.
Oh, please, come on. Would it be better if we just for this one? For 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 one time, yeah, go ahead. Just just as long as it. I'll just.
My only quick suggestion is going to be as we move forward on the P O C D, consider acquiring gas stations and grocery stores that have emergency generation. Of running newer, you know, remodels as we move forward, considering that resources failure to keep the grid up and running during.
Oh.
I think that would be something that Tom needs to look at. My other comment would be to have the commission look at our agricultural regulations. And see if there could be some changes to the agricultural rights here in town to promote agro-tourism or, you know, something along those lines, van- grow retail type thing. And we constantly run into what's retail, what's agriculture, what's, you know, house plants, stuff like that. But I think, you know, this is an opportunity to at least allow the P O C D kind of look at those those areas. So thank you very much for.
Okay. No, no problem, no problem.
It was nice and short and sweet.
Yeah, the courage to come in here and hang out with the meeting. So, all right. So that so that's something that we'll we'll take in and that's something that the emergency, the generation generation thing, I hadn't thought about. That's very good suggestion. So I'm glad that we.
I think maybe part of the design, right, too.
Yeah, I think everyone's house has to sort of lean that way too.
Eventually, we can force that one.
I mean, how many times do you?
It's coming to the point where you just, I mean, you know, it's it's a reality where all this cyber stuff that happens, you know, the grid could shut off at any time. Anyway, I'm sorry, I digress.
Fine, fine with that. I'll get, I mean, I'm good. Um, the other, the other thing is we do have to seriously consider um developing a meeting schedule so that we can set aside time. Either at a meeting, before a meeting, after meeting, or set a meeting schedule and um to have P O C D conversations and get that rolling. Like to um. You know, kind of brainstorm with the applicants as well for the consultant, you know, the consultant applicants to see, you know, what they see as and proper and a need for. Um, amount, et cetera, but um we'd like some feedback from the commission in general as well. When you're available, what, do you want to have an extra meeting per month, whether you want, you know, wow, and what works with the commission?
Do you have a suggestion?
I'm waiting.
Should it be more than once a month or?
Um, I think so in the two thousand thirteen and I believe in the two thousand three, the advisory committee met once a month. Um, so it was outside of the commission meeting because it was a committee made up of other members. This committee is made up of mission members, so. So it can, you know, being back to back with it or whatever, I don't think you can afford to dedicate one of your two meetings a month to this. We have too many, we got coming up.
No, it would have to be outside.
We were the counter all day, it was like, if we got four new applications today, so.
Yeah, so.
We're a hot town right now.
And so, um, you know, it's just, I I, yeah, I don't think you can afford to do it instead of a meeting, you might be able to.
Yeah.
Add to the short, you know, a short meeting or a long meeting or something, but that's a difficult thing to do.
And also the. Yeah, the committees on the P O C D before, didn't they contain like thirteen or fifteen members or something?
Yeah, they were a little.
Last time there was.
How many?
We we made it that we're in and space downstairs.
Yeah.
We filled up that hole, you know, a lot of members, I recall.
Yeah, that's.
It was like once a month.
Well, it was definitely once a month.
Well, you already know, I'm sorry.
I did secretary at that for for the two thousand thirteen, I did it, not two thousand three.
My memory's.
I I think there were nine, no? I could be wrong, and but we have to thirteen, we counted it on the, I guess, my book that looked downstairs.
I think the regular members, but I think there were like probably twenty or something on on the the committee, but on a regular basis, whenever you guys met, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was probably closer to the.
And have they, you they could have taught me more, so, yeah.
But I think there was more than than nine.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Correctly, I think.
I mean, I wasn't involved.
Yeah, so, but but all the same, you know, the coordinated and everybody, but at the same time, like we had discussed that one of the.
Long meetings.
No, you're the only one.
Other meetings that the uh you may have, yes, a different meeting, so if you're discussing.
Second Thursday.
The agricultural rights, for instance, you might find knows somebody else in the agricultural community, I don't know, maybe not agricultural, but it's a work. But if you want to pull in or you're discussing economic development, you discuss that you might then pull in somebody from the Economic Development Commission and.
That's what I remember is bringing in, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, please.
I remember bringing in other people.
Well, yeah, we should do it in town.
Yeah, right, that's I I remember that, yeah.
So that's, we actually discussed that at one of the Zoom, one of the meetings we had virtually, it was totally virtually, and we did discuss the fact that um bringing in. The the.
The different.
The different groups, because so many were interested to be serve on the P O C D.
Everybody.
Steering committee, the the whole planning zoning commission is serving as the committee, or almost the whole planning zoning commission, so.
Adopted. Work on these two. Break it down.
The um, so in lieu of having a committee made up of a member from each of the other, we use and other types of commissions that.
Chris Casey never mentioned.
P O C D, I know. Instead, well, we, you said you bring them in one at a time or, you know, small group at a time for their interest.
That could be the the public input. Uh on whatever subject we're bringing up that night, so it's out until that night, then we shouldn't invite the public to come to speak.
Well, I think not on a.
Um so I don't, not generally that in after the.
Not 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 so long.
You'll be there seven hours and then don't do that.
Get some thoughts.
No, no.
You put a time span on it.
It doesn't work, too.
No, you have, you have the commissions that are involved, so actually agriculture was really bad one because we don't have.
Anything, you don't want to.
Conservation, you want to make a conservation or some um a member or two from the conservation commission may have feedback for the board.
Yeah, but conservation. Yeah.
Economic development, up to people from the economic development commission, when even discussing um safety and whatnot, maybe from the police commission. You know, each commission were discussing the items that are relevant to their commissions.
Yeah, because there's different sections, so some of the sections they don't want anything to do with, but when they start talking about conservation or, you know, the the character of the town or something, that's probably gonna draw a lot of interest.
Right, all the sections.
But anyway, so uh as far as I do not want to do it in tandem with our regular meetings, not at all, I think would.
Like I said, I'm just throwing out ideas.
You know, I would say, okay, order coffee, pizza, everything wine.
A lot of wine.
Have to bring it in, have to bring it in.
That'd be earlier meeting and start earlier year of all night.
Yeah, so I don't know if we want to go to to more, it's gonna be difficult because I, you know, I I sometimes I think that. One meeting is not gonna be enough to really accomplish anything, and I'm thinking it may wish a role with two meetings a month.
Let me start with one.
We can.
I was gonna say, you might find in my experience, now I was on and off in two thousand thirteen, because it was when I was part-time in the department. And then I didn't work for the town for a while, so I was part of it and then not, and then again, when I got rehired. But the um, you know, there might be a ramp up period, or we're working on something more specific, maybe you're working on editing. Um and I know I jumped all the way to the end, but you're working on editing and you want to do, you know, more intense and be and do more often, maybe a shorter time period because of what you're working on. You can always schedule meetings, we're just trying to, at this point, get an outline of what we can anticipate, what you you can anticipate. And perhaps um provide that to the consultants or get their feedback.
Okay, all right, so one meeting a month, then we need to go on to the second one.
Maybe one meeting.
Schedule, then you schedule on a Saturday, Thursday, and then.
And Thursdays again.
I would totally do this.
The fourth, the fourth Thursday would be uh if you needed to meet, but uh not scheduled, you just, you know, need another meeting.
Yeah, two extra uh personally.
On demand.
It would be a committee meeting, so.
And the man hit the button.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to discuss other commission things, but it would be a special, it would be a a committee meeting, so.
No, no. And the second Thursday works.
And they're almost.
Ten hours and no.
Actually, the fourth Thursday works better for me, but I'll try to see if I can get it to go.
You know, maybe right now it's a Thursday and another Thursday meeting, and then, you know, once we talk with the folks, once we um, you know, I maybe everybody looks at their year-long calendar.
Okay, the second and fourth.
Let's take it to fourth, it's all right, most better for you. Because the second's sort of a busy one, but.
So I'll come up with a tentative schedule that we can add a toast um and get your approval for it before we move forward with it. Everybody can get a copy of that and say, oh, I'm on vacation here, now kids getting married or, you know, whatever, and. And then it's okay, five of you can't be there, oh, I'm on vacation.
All right, well, say to the second Thursday, yeah, exactly.
Right. Okay, so I just have one quick comment, I talked with Maureen um on the phone about it, but um haven't submitted any formal survey. But uh one of the things that I think would be important for us to um talk about or consider with the E O C D is preservation of um water. Uh for the town, um it it's um bothers me that the city of Meriden uh has multiple reservoirs within our town. Uh New Britain has a reservoir within our town, um when we were hearing.
Just giving away.
The application from Pierre Bennerup last year for the zone change to one of his properties. Uh the city of Meriden uh offered testimony that they were considering starting up one of their wells, uh which is on um that property. And um actually tied into a significant aquifer in the area of uh Chamberlain Highway and, you know, down uh. Where it's all P O C D now anyway, and has been um with the idea of preserving it, but um I have no idea what arrangements our town has. Um for acquiring water if we ever needed to, um but I kind of don't think that Meriden or New Britain are paying taxes. You know, municipally owned property within our bounds, and um yet Meriden um, you know, my own family has experienced Meriden. Trying to take property by eminent domain to preserve their reservoirs. So um you know, I think it's something that uh we need to think of for ourselves. Um with climate change and all, uh and some of the drought conditions that we've seen, um we need to watch out for ourselves.
I agree with you there, and I do remember the while they were speaking of that Meriden ad that was, from what I heard, it was once active and they had an issue with taking so much water that it drained out the salmon. True. So I do think that is some of the issues.
Maybe we need to just eliminate the domain on Meriden and New Britain.
Towns towns have potential well sites. And the town, the water department knows about the potential well sites, but. Oh, well sites, there are potential well sites should be protected. Uh because we're losing one already, uh that's going bad, it's because they're putting so many chemicals in the water right now that. They try to keep keep it clean for drinking, uh that we should look at our all.
Well, live another ten years.
Elton Road. I mean, that's bad.
Who's putting, who's putting stuff in in the.
The aquifer has problem. Those those wells have a problem.
My house is fine.
You're you're you got a separate.
Let me scratch my other eye.
You got your own well, you got your own well, the town wells are having a problem.
I know, but the aquifer is the aquifer.
So, well, that's true.
So.
But uh.
Like to live on the edge, sorry.
But but the the sites that are are designated right now that. The town went through. Fifteen years ago or so, uh should be protected or.
There's like five of them, yeah, we were just discussing the other day.
Yeah. You know, when I was at a water commission, I remember. All of them, but uh. You know, we should be protecting those well sites, yeah, and and if it's true end in the bank or whatever we got to do. Or put in conservation, you know, or something, uh I don't know what the process is of purchasing land. Uh for the well site, uh we need to look at that because we can't keep our purchase in our own water from city to Britain. And that's what we do.
Well, that's because that that reservoir was given away.
Wow.
When the town, when they, when the town was off of that reservoir, they said, oh, we're not interested, you know.
Also reservoir, art spawn, all that, it's a simple prayer.
Yeah.
We gave it to a foreign dollar.
The watershed.
And we don't give a tax.
Watershed maps are um protected um and not really publicly available. But uh the area um in that we're talking about where uh Bennerup was asking for the zone change. Um there is an enormous aquifer um under that part of town, and um I know that, you know, it's always been. An interest to protect that area from development, and so that's why it's P O C D and um, you know, no city water down there. Uh but the town um as part of the protection of water might consider the purchase of development rights. Um to keep that area agricultural.
Yeah.
You know, and that that would make the land more affordable um for farms to buy, so like Chris Edge had somebody. Uh interested for one of those properties that he was talking about recently, and now it's.
I think the old Sunnyport Greenhouse.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, anybody that comes along and really wants to engage in agriculture, they could sell their development rights too, so it's not, you know, I I think it just makes. Um is the purchase of the development rights makes the land more affordable for a younger generation person that might not otherwise be able to afford it.
Yep. Sure, I have the brain-storming thoughts at this point. Jeez, I'm worried about his white parents with town, because I can't keep my thumbs to it, so. I'm all for vinyl.
So. I'll make the motion to adjourn then.
Yeah, right, so that will be at eight twenty, maybe eight twenty-five, so I'm thinking of eight twenty-four. Oh, we have a second.
I have a second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roman, all of us in favor, all right, it's booked, all right, guys, goodbye, Steve.
Bye, guys.
Hi, Mark.
Good night.
All right, good night, everyone.